Okay, Mr. Redford, we're ready.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the work session for the month of January. We have new guests. Recognition of meetings. Personnel. Reorganization meeting and combined work session and regular board meeting in December. And Pride and Promises will be next week.
Do we have the product?
Is there the financial audit tonight? That's next week.
Next week's the financial audit. January is PSBA School Board Appreciation Month. We have a few new school board members. So we will be taking, you're being warned now. Clark Studio will be here at six forty-five. Cliche. Wear something nice, okay? For our annual yearbook picture. Before Mr. Redford moves on. Well, on the next week's meeting, will you have about tonight's meeting? Do we need to recognize the meeting?
Oh, yes, I will.
Thank you. The building grounds met prior to this work session to review potential transition from the library to a learning commons.
Okay. You have administrative reports, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Sager.
Mr. Sager. I'm looking at, never mind.
Okay, the month of December, we had another driver meeting. This month, we did it, got active procedures. It seems like constantly somebody's on the mountain bus radio talking about an accident happened somewhere. And we try to keep them prepared in case they're involved in something and they're what we need to do. We've had, we stopped on four twenty-two, we had the other lane pile up on us. They gave one guard a stop and another one running back of that one. We weren't involved, but can always be up. As we talked about, I think they know kind of what's good and what's not to do. Also, one of the green beans, I got all the bodywork done, looking pretty good. And it was definitely worth it.
Here's my thought, too, that I want to throw out there at you. I mean, mechanically, how are they doing? I mean, we had some concerns and we've come up with the rule that they don't leave the county. If we have a group taking advantage, that we rent one, and we're going to have new ones. But one thing I'd like you to think about before we reject bullet number three is that would it be worth it just to keep them, one of them or both of them backups, emergencies, or would they just be taking up space?
I think, well, they're looking good. We'll get some good money for them. And I'm thinking these things are probably worth seven or eight thousand dollars.
Really?
They're old fixes, but they don't have boot room models, like ninety-nine, ninety-eight, like that. Maybe the one plus than that, but they look pretty good now. And they're sixteen years old. We were using the same, we came in the workforce very, they run great, but then he gave a minute, something could break on, and that's not going to be controlled. Sixteen years old. But they both run good and stuff like that.
It's amazing the price on used vehicles anymore. I mean, it's.
And like, even when they're all rusted like that, they would have been worth probably three or four. Now they're good now.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Help. Finally.
Right, right.
They've lost it anyway.
Right.
And last, I have no bearings on June thirty at this point.
That will be an executive session item for personnel next Wednesday at six o'clock.
Very good. Any questions for Joe? Mr. Novak?
We replaced the motor wiring harness and the whistle-off air gainer. Replaced the faucets in the women's bathroom and gym lobby. They replaced some thermometers throughout the building. Heating stations, sometimes they, we do have some issues, especially with the old air control ones. We still have our four hundred wind, there's still air control, so they're all finishing sometimes. Replaced a lot of valves and badges of the void washroom. And I'm looking to for my state of the world coming up, not moving up this year. I start doing wing after wind, changing all the overheads to LEDs. Long term, it's beneficial for the school this year. We've installed TVs that Mr. Lee recently got in at the high school and elementary. We have one left, one more to hang tomorrow at the elementary, and they're all gone. And last day, I think we did have a water leak over Christmas. I'd like to thank Kim Conrad for all her help. She definitely helped me a lot. We had a. We had a window with a high winds and a vibration, a latch vibrating down. Some are tighter than others. I spoke to Mr. Rich, we're going to look at some detents for them, see if we can increase that. We did have a faucet freeze in our classroom. We probably lost a couple thousand gallons of water. It all, in room two twenty-two, the laundry room leaked down, the girls', old girls' locker room. And part of this, our record storage room, where we cleaned it out and we dried it up throughout the Christmas break. And we got it all back together before Tuesday. We have some ceiling tile that I lost. I had a guy come in yesterday, he looked at the ceiling in the girls' locker room, which was my concern. He assured me it was, and it should be safe. We need to scuff it, hard, maybe we'll scuff it, we'll do it with the pipe, we'll re-skill it with plaster and paint it. The classroom, the laundry floor, the floor one degree, the towels lifting, we will have to replace the tiles.
There's no mold issues or anything like that, though?
I have the humidifier running in the locker room and the record storage room, we're changing. We're still pulling moisture out of the ceiling, so it's going to take a while.
Any electrical issues from that?
We did have some alarms go off once we dried our electrical panel out. And we're going to continue to monitor that, see if there's any issues going forward, but we thought like it doesn't dry off. The other issue was, I called fourth floor incorporating the people who just finished our old gym floor. He came up right away and looked at the floor. He does not see any signs of water that could have migrated on the floor. We haven't moved up to the floor. He definitely said, we will see any damage to every surface within a week, so we're going to have to approach that timeframe. He's going to show up here Monday coming to see if there's any issues that he. He showed me a couple things to look for, and I did not see anything at all. I just thought, I'd rather have somebody deal with it, please look forward, look at it before we. On the gym floor.
Well, whoever designed the window locks is an idiot. I mean, they're made, you know, gravity is going to pull them down. Why they didn't have them hooked on the window where you had to pull them up to open the window? Would have seemed like it would have made more sense, but I'm not an engineer, so.
That's what I'm also maybe able to look at, if we can turn them one hundred eighty degrees.
Right.
Well, the good news is every window on the first and second floor has the same problem.
Oh, I know, yeah, they're all the same. Do.
Have too much problem coming open that window, it's pretty brittle. And it was pretty downwind.
Right, oh, yeah. Do we have any other leaks, issues? I mean, I know we looked at that gym and the wrestling room last year. We haven't any issues yet with water coming in through there?
The only thing we have coming up for state of the world is our last section of roof. And that will be the, it was part of four hundred wing, the crossover wing. The new gymnasium is still original. Our proposed, we're going to have whistle without that.
Was it leaking by the wrestling room last year?
There's one little piece close to the wrestling room also. And there's one little section, believe it or not, on top of the cat, three of them down.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have the numbers together, see by any moment.
But as of right now, we don't have, there's no water coming in them right now, okay. Okay, any questions for Mr. Novak? Mrs. Bell?
I'm going to the elementary. We finished, I think in December, finished with our bus incentive. At the winter, we're doing a kindness corner where kids being caught kindness get a snowflake. And they get sent home with a packet of hot cocoa and a snowflake saying how they were a kindness student. I got news, good news in regards to the speech position. Yesterday, I received an application. I'll be interviewing that individual on Friday, so hopefully that works out. We have our numbers coming in for IEPs. I have six students so far coming in to kindergarten with IEPs. And those meetings are set for the beginning of February. And then we are looking to Mr. Rich and Mrs. Conrad had mentioned. They're using PCCD grant for services with Angelus in the district. Possibly in, pardon me, Mr. Rich, we're looking at maybe social, social work services, but that is in the works.
If you would pause that for a minute, just the abbreviated version. One of our grants has different levels, tier one, tier two, tier three safety. Which grant is that?
We're calling it the PCCD grant, but it testifies that it will pass on.
Through that vehicle.
To the school through the Pennsylvania.
Right, PCCD, right. So the extra money from the state, they funneled it through PCCD. In order to do anything on tier two, you had to check all boxes on tier one. We qualify for how much money, non-competitive? Okay. So we, they were not impressed with our mental health piece. I had Mrs. Conrad survey other business managers and what they were doing for the mental health piece. And Shilango is using Angelus, Angelus has a home here as it is. But that's a therapist and billing insurances. Okay, this will be a licensed social worker. As you know, coming out of the pandemic, we're seeing more and different types of behaviors. And so the licensed social worker through Angelus will be available for one thousand two hundred seventy-eight hours per, for the contracted agreement. And the licensed social worker lives right there. So it's a rural resident. Anything else, Mrs. Conrad?
No, there's just, there's a few guys, there's physical safety and then the mental health side, split into two. And we were able to meet some of the tier one things with our safety equipment. But then we were able to use some of it on tier two things that we didn't have. But our, on the mental health side, we had to meet all of our tier one requirements, which there were about six. So I had to have the board office in to the E O I center yesterday, the whole application. If you go through, I don't know, more pages of ones, but it links the different ones that we actually, those ones that we, that we were ever meeting. Doesn't list the ones we wanted. But I do, I can screenshot those. Like, for instance, on the mental health side, they, we had to have social workers in those buildings, we don't have that. We had to have a school pathologist in those buildings. We don't have two of those, I don't know. Those are just a couple weeks. We're going to have to use our funds for tier one activities, I guess.
So in order to unlock everything else, you've got to meet this tier one criteria.
It wasn't just the here's your hundred sixty thousand.
They tell us what we need. Sorry, please continue.
Okay, any questions for Nicole? Mr. Swerble?
So just before Christmas, at the beginning of December, we did a core two progress report. We also wrapped up all of our benchmark two testing, which will be able to do the benchmark one, benchmark two comparison. And we also use that data to either exit or qualify kids who are tied to one certain. That's our middle of the road benchmark. And then a lot of exciting things happened, we made a third grade musical. We also had Lawrence County Brass come in and do an assembly for us. They either do a winter assembly or spring. We had a Spartan Tree Spectacular, we took a deal on that. We collected all over two thousand items for the rest of the mission. Great turnout. And of course, we have our holiday party there.
Any questions for Dan? Mr. Frenjel?
High school, same thing, like Dan said, we did all of our benchmark testing, finishing up some Keystone testing this week. In January, during our service day for Lawrence County. Then we'll be doing data team, comparing that benchmark data. And comparing that benchmark data with T-Box data would be where students are predicted to be proficient T-wise when they're coming in. Next week on Wednesday, Mr. Pertow will be in here. Got changed instead of course to last year mat. Every year we do that before we start scheduling, get that, so you got, you got. And the last thing is, middle school team and the teachers in the one hundred hallway kind of took on Christmas this year. Great decorating in the one hundred hallway. They were dealing with chain link with the paper, with an elf theme. And then Miles, Kordeski, Flintrum. We brought back the winter sing-along. And during that, we did the quarter caring. Students on the quarter caring raised over six thousand dollars this year. And the winners were Jackson, Sardis, from Mel, and maybe you'll. Really good. Something great before Kevin, we're going to be in that. Have a good time.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Frenjel? Mrs. Columbus?
Yeah, a lot of going on this semester. Played a lot of concerts and happening. Play school, had their Christmas choir concert, band concert. Elementary, like Dan mentioned, was there, very, very musical. We also had five students that auditioned, they were not required for P M E A, it was for daughter's band, that went for that. And then we have nineteen students that were selected to participate in Lawrence County All-Star Band Festival. Elementary academic games. We play if the students go to academic games. We have four that received certificates for competing. And we have a student, Tricia Howson, received a certificate of undefeated. She also received an undefeated score in propaganda, which means she's eligible to attend Nationals this year. Spartan Season of Giving, my colleagues have already mentioned about the quarter caring. And then we also had our National Honor Society sponsor our wounded warrior project. Where they sponsored a program for grade ten as well, where they came in and talked about what wounded warrior does. And they were able to collect donations. Let's see what I have here, fifty veterans, they got enough for fifty veterans and their families was provided with holiday meals. And they also were able to donate three hundred dollars. Like Mr. Swerble mentioned, too, the Spartan Tree Spectacular, they collected over twenty, or over two thousand items. And just the night of the Christmas Tree Spectacular, as people were walking around, they had a donation box just sitting there. They collected over two hundred dollars that they then brought down to the city rescue mission. This little book, the P T L, on Monday, they're trying to donate at Ben Franklin's. So you can go anytime during the day, tell us their route with the frame, you pay, and it's free.
Any questions for Mrs. Columbus? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just a couple things. A couple breaks, we just performed some routine agents and uptake. We also hung a couple access points, areas that Mr. Novak had run the cable before. We wanted to wait till we weren't going to inhibit students. So that's a place, water break, under Mr. Novak spoke about, is I came in, we have a, I gave a comprehensive list to Mrs. Conrad and Mr. Rich on the items that were lost and what we need to, what we need to replace them. We did move a couple of switches, we lost switches, which actually impacted our base sensors. I was talking to Mrs. Columbus about that today. And the lab was pretty much complete loss. So there were twelve machines in there, monitors, switches, so forth. But I think we have a good plan to replace them, and they've already been ordered. So as soon as we get all the equipment, we will set a high, high volume for us.
Right.
We'll get that back up and running. Mr. Frenjel spoke to the, the test, and so I won't speak to that. But other than that, we had seventy-eight tickets in December, a little bit late because of the holidays and so forth. But our response time is really good, I was proud of that, two hours and twenty-six minutes. And it took three days, three hours to resolve this, thinking, not everything from, hey, can you reset my password for, you know, a special cable we need to have run down at the elementary? To get access for Mrs. Boniak that we've had for a little while, so it is cute. But overall, it was a good, it was a productive break. And I feel good about the plan we have in place to replace the damaged boards.
Well, we also have a plan to try to minimize that so that never happens again.
Any questions for Mr. Lee? Okay. Mr. Frenjel, I did have one question about the keystones. I took a big November Christmas vacation about why do we take the keystones? Because they aren't required, I guess? But my, my answer was, that's how we know whether you're making progress. And don't they have to pass them to move on?
So just this year is the first year of Act one fifty-eight. Act one fifty-eight students require students to either have three passing keystone scores. Or there's five other pathways in which students could possibly achieve their high school home. So passing the keystones is the easiest pathway. There's a compartment, pathway two is a compartment sport, where you pass two keystones, you don't have, you don't have a blow away. So the keystones do matter for graduation. Up until this past year, they, they had not. But this year, starting with Act one fifty-eight, they are a graduation requirement.
Thank you.
That's why we talked, we're not changing any of our routines, it is what it is.
No, we have graduation project in the new, in the plan. Have we, I know we used to have that, and then did we discontinue it? And now we're going back to it?
It was state requirement prior to two thousand fourteen. I think two thousand fourteen and fifteen, it ran away from being a state requirement, so we didn't have that. But based on everything Mr. Rich and I talked about, teaching kids to research their career and college pathway. Having them present, having them have professional skills, writing a presentation or email, making a professional phone conversation, doing job shadowing. It's something which will be very valuable for our students.
That has been our longest conversation.
No, it seemed like it's a four-year thing. What do kids do that are, say, a junior or sophomore this year? Do they still do that, or do they do a modified version, or?
So this year's junior class, we will have our senior English teacher serve them, walk them through pretty much, they've done it, but they haven't catalogued. So everybody who'd be a junior this year had a tenth grade rotation. So they would have already made a resume, a simple resume. They may not have stayed that, they've already done a simple cover. So they have, they've done all these things, so we're going to make part of our senior English English classes this year. So that they will be able to present something in spring when we put in those academic days for those presentations. And then the sophomore class and beyond will have everything, because they're currently in those sophomore rotations. And there's a whole thousand, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Wysocki, and Mr. Chavez are aware of the student project. So this junior class, they only want it to be a little bit different, but we're going to make sure that they have all those things. They're just important, having a letter, having a list of references in case you apply for a job. So it's going to be.
Right, oh, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
That's why we decided to bring it back when the state left it goes. And all honesty, we've talked about this since two thousand sixteen. We're looking about doing some things about two thousand nineteen, COVID hit. We're coming out of COVID, this is the last piece of something that we just feel is best. Doesn't matter what the state says, in this sense, we feel it's best for their post-secondary transition.
Mm-hmm. Not wrong with doing more.
No, no. Minimums are that, are they not, minimums?
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Conrad?
As you know, they do, I have a place to go through a, a report. Speaking of that, I think it's, I'm not sure about that. The builders were supposed to put somebody in. Worked on some floor labor reports for the end of the call thirty-one quarter, December quarter, or one on W two. They mentioned again about the, well, I guess, plane has been filed about the same numbers of gas. So it's easily a matter of placing these pieces. And I know this is, that's our kind of, already. And now this note that on the end of the season, well, we're voting next year, it's pretty, that's one for the tax resolution. It's one of the voluntary taxes, which is five point six. So that, we, the Florida's looking at it, it's twenty-five euros. If we would go that far, it would be around one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And if we would go that further, and no one else would change anything, I think that would be further.
How much would that be the average taxpayer?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Conrad? Mr. Rich?
I don't have any more report additionally. Thank you for the administrative reports, well prepared.
No comments from the floor.
It's a good sign.
Bill listings, all that'll be next. We'll have a name for the custodian next week. Ed?
Possible.
Okay. Mrs. Bell, that's the long-term substitute teaching position. Item D, professional development workshops. Approve the following professional development workshops, Mr. Frenjel and Mr. Pertow. January eighth, the N C double A workshop, cost of district is twenty-five each and mileage. Mr. Pertow to College Success Forum, January thirty-first, Robert Morris. Cost of district will be mileage and miles. Mr. Swerble, Mrs. Bell, Title One Improving School Performance Conference on January twenty-ninth to February first. At the Sheraton Station Square, cost of district will be registration four, one hundred and fifty each, includes Mills and Mileage. Any questions on item D? Additions to the volunteer and non-instructural substitute listing. That's in their doc files. We'll move on, item ten, board action items, disposal of assets. Approve the disposal of the following unused and outdated vocational agricultural, industrial arts equipment for scrap value. Only one bid was received for the belt sander, the bandsaw, and the Dayton joiner. Any questions on, boy, it's time to scrap them, but they're getting pretty obsolete. Yeah. Item B, agreement with.
One thing here, Tim's already interrupted, is there, like, nowhere we could donate those items to? Something to help some less fortunate kids or schools anywhere?
What's their operational condition?
They both operate. I just think they're old. Something about it is pretty low-wafer.
Mike, we're not opposed to that, and if you give us the authority to properly dispose, that could be a properly dispose of, too. I don't know who's interested, you know, I know when we have extra chairs or things like that, we might contact private elementary schools. And like I said, I'm not opposed to anything. If you got an idea of where we should contact, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Taking the rocket sale, this way they're gone, and we still sell for people who are still in the springtime. This way it's not local, anybody can get hurt from our equipment that makes that.
Right. Item B, agreement with Angelus Therapeutic. This was, Mrs. Conrad had talked about this. Item C, policy adaptation, adoption, second reading. Zero eleven to eight ten. Any questions on that item? Item D, approval of field trips. Approve the following field trips, eleven straight students to the National College Fair at the David Lawrence Convention Center, February eighth. Cost of district is for transportation. Any question on D? E, student teacher, Rebecca Schultz as student teacher to Mr., Mrs. Kordeski for the spring twenty-three semester. Any questions on student teacher? And there's student teacher, Shiana. And there's student teacher, Shanna Rett, student teacher under Mrs. Grin and Mrs. Downing for the spring semester. Any questions on item F? Item G is Practum student, um, Madison Kelly, undergrad psychology student from Slipper Rock to complete her Practum under Mr. Pertow for the spring twenty twenty-three semester. Any questions on item G? Item H, a la carte pricing. Item I, Act, uh, one resolution for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, this is the, what Mrs. Conrad talked about, our index thought going over five point six. Any questions on that one? Uh, any new business? Any questions? Nope. Yeah, I, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming up.
Have a good night, everybody.
Hey, good night, Mike.